To item 8A, approval of an agreement with Overland Pacific and Cutler for the preparation of a Dock Town plan and provision of relocation assistance services. I'd like to introduce our city manager, who will present a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And in light of the fact that this has been an issue that has been evolving over the last year and plus, I did want to take a little bit of time to describe the reason for this item this evening, and a little bit of history. And I'd like to really first start by saying that this item is before you in spite of significant efforts to avoid this timeframe. However, the time is now here for us to make plans for the closure of the Dock Town Marina in order to comply with state law. The City Council and certain line of staff recognize that this transition will be challenging for people who are currently living at Dock Town, and we're really committed to providing a reasonable timeframe and practical assistance for people who need to move to a new home. I also want to recognize that the process to get to this point has been a difficult one. It's been difficult for Dock Town residents, it's been difficult for community members, and for the city. The city's been involved in active litigation and been threatened with litigation for well over a year now, and that has certainly limited our ability to have open conversations publicly and with the community. And I'd like to acknowledge, particularly for Dock Town community members who are here in the room, that we've made some mistakes along the way. There have been times when we've not been able to communicate as promptly or as effectively as I know would have been appropriate, and so we regret that that's the case. We have been learning, and we have been trying to learn through that process, and we've been listening. And so tonight, we really do think there are some specific steps that the city can take to help people who are impacted by this change. So the item before you tonight is to approve the contract that would help us work with an experienced firm to develop a relocation assistance program that would be really customized to the needs of people who are currently living at Dock Town. I'll begin by briefly describing the reasons that the Marina needs to close in order to conform with state law, and I'll talk about the potential benefits which could be provided, our recommended consultant, and then the process that we propose to undertake in order to develop the Dock Town plan. Our goal in this is to work closely with members of the Dock Town community in order to understand their needs and to create a plan to address those needs. And we're in the process of trying to schedule individual meetings with each tenant this month. I'll then talk about the process for public involvement. The city has committed to adopting a Dock Town plan before the end of the year. So, brief history, since 1954, the city of Redwood City has served as a trustee for the land on which the Dock Town Marina is located. This only includes the land that's under the creek, it's not the land-based property that's adjacent to the Marina. That land is leased by the city from a private owner. In our role as trustee, the city owns the creek area on behalf of the citizens of California. The city is legally obligated to ensure that that land is used in accordance with the statutes that granted the land to the city. And we're also obligated to adhere to the California Constitution, related case law, the common law of public trust doctrine. The State Lands Commission oversees grants of state lands like this one. Dock Town Marina has existed since the 1960s. Between 1983 and 2013, the Marina was operated by a private operator. When that operator decided to terminate the permit for operating the Marina, the city stepped in to operate the Marina in order to avoid having to relocate members of the Dock Town community. Currently, there are approximately 71 residential tenants at the 95 occupied berths within the Marina. Whether operated by a private operator or by the city, people living at Dock Town have always participated in short-term rental agreements. At this stage, the State Lands Commission has made clear that the city cannot permit private residential uses at Dock Town. Private uses do not provide enough public access to state lands. A similar public policy issue occurs over public access to beaches for the California coast. Additionally, late in 2015, a group called Citizens for Public Trust brought a lawsuit against the city challenging residential uses at Dock Town. In settling that lawsuit earlier this year, the city agreed to develop a plan to comply with the granting statutes by the end of this year, and to begin implementing that plan in 2017. Knowing our challenging housing situation, we did try to extend the time that the Marina could operate. City officials worked extensively with the State Lands Commission staff, with local legislators, and with representatives of the Dock Town community to try to revise the city's granting statute. Our goal was to allow current Dock Town community members to be able to have an extended period of time, 15 years, in order to plan for relocation. The proposed legislation included conditions that would ensure that providential use at Dock Town would be limited to people currently living there. The timeframe would have allowed for an ample time to relocate or to create a new Marina in another location in Redwood City. Unfortunately, however, the draft legislation could not garner full support from the members of the Dock Town community, and legislators were not able to pursue the proposal. The city is not obligated to provide specific relocation benefits in this situation. However, the city has been committed to collaborating with Dock Town residents to develop a fair and customized program that would address some of the hardships that we know people at Dock Town may face during the relocation process. Based on the feedback we've received so far, some of the components we expect the Dock Town plan to include would be a year-long transition schedule, moving assistance, which could include such things as utility connections for craft that move to a new Marina, an incentive program for those who are able to move more quickly, help finding a new Marina slip for people in watercraft, or a new land-based residence, and specific aid for people who may be seniors, veterans, and low-income. The specific benefits that would come to you in an actual Dock Town plan are likely to vary based on the input we receive over the next two months. But these types of benefits are fairly common in relocation situations like this. A one exam—sorry, exception is the year-long transition schedule. That is deliberately much longer than that would be normally required in a situation like that, and that's because we've heard from folks at Dock Town how difficult it is to find marinas with available berths, and then certainly the land-based housing situation is one we're painfully aware of. The city issued a request for proposals process to retain a qualified consultant to help prepare the Dock Town plan with substantial input from Dock Town community members, and then, once a plan is adopted, to implement the services that the City Council approves. Four experienced Bay Area firms submitted responses. Staff evaluated those proposals on the basis of their experience, proposed costs, the depth of staffing that they could offer, and prior experience with the firm. We interviewed two of the four firms, and one firm, Overland Pacific and Cutler, clearly rose to the top of that process. OPC has provided relocation services to public agencies for 36 years, including, very local to us, East Palo Alto, San Carlos, South San Francisco, Mountain View, Palo Alto, San Jose, and Sunnyvale. They have extensive experience in working with individuals throughout California to find new housing. They have contracted with Marine appraisers to appropriately evaluate the vessels and floating homes that are present at Dock Town. The recommend agreement has a not-to-exceed cost of $311,668. Litigation settlement that the city entered into required the city to set aside a reserve of $3 million to address costs associated with preparing and implementing the Dock Town plan, and the cost of this agreement would come from that reserve. The total cost of providing relocation assistance has not yet been determined but will be as part of the process of drafting the Dock Town plan, and at that time, we will be assessing a number of funding mechanisms for funding those benefits. Approving the recommended agreement will authorize this firm to work with Dock Town community members to understand their needs and to develop a plan to address their costs. OPC has gathered preliminary data and is currently working to meet with tenants individually. That feedback will be incorporated into the draft plan. After the draft plan is released, we'll then invite residents to a second series of meetings, both individually and a community meeting. That will then have that feedback incorporated into the plan that's presented to the City Council at a publicly noticed City Council meeting. In terms of the timing, we are inviting substantial involvement, as described by Dock Town community members, through both these individual meetings and community meetings and public meetings. We're also inviting comments by email at any time at the email address that's shown here. We expect to release the draft Dock Town plan in mid-November, and then for that to be publicly available at that time. We'll work to incorporate the feedback received and then present the draft plan to the council, and that date is tentatively scheduled as December 12th. Once the council approves a final plan, Representatives of OPC will seek to meet with individuals to discuss the specific assistance for which they qualify, and then help them through the relocation process. Currently, we expect that process to take about a year. Our recommendation this evening is that the City Council approve a contract with OPC in the amount of $311,668 to prepare a Dock Town plan with substantial input from the Dock Town community, and then to provide relocation services once the City Council adopts a Dock Town plan. We do have Chad Wakefield from OPC here, and we're appreciative of his presence, and he or staff are available to answer questions. And then the process this evening would be to invite public comment, and then for your discussion. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I do have one speaker's card. I will go to that now. Mr. Lee Callister? If you have a speaker's card, please get it up now. Not you, Lee, I have yours.
Good evening, Councilmembers, staff, and what's left of the public. I'm Lee Callister from Dock Town, and I would like to ask a question, or two. Why are city officials speeding up their plan to dismantle the historic community of Dock Town? All the Hennig Agreement says is that the city needs to have a plan that's acceptable to state lands by the end of this year, and that they need to start implementing it by the end of December of next year. So why are city managers telling us and the press that the city plans to start dismantling Dock Town early next year? That's the spin that's going out in the press. No matter how city officials are spinning it on their website and talk to the press, we did not walk away from negotiations over the 15-year extensions. Someone else pulled the plug. We were still negotiating in good faith and trying to reach a compromise. What the negotiating team leader said was that we were out of time to get the bill passed this year, so there was no point in further discussions. However, State Lands Commission Betty Chair—Chair Betty Yee has now said twice on video that it's not State Lands staff's job to be setting conditions on our ability to buy, transfer, and rent our own property, which has been the main stumbling block in this 15-year lease extension. She said these kinds of issues should be between the city and Dock Town residents, and that there may be—need to be another public meeting to discuss that. So the city needs to stop blaming all their actions on state lands, which they continually do. "Oh, we're forced by state lands to do this." No, you're not. Nate Soloff from Jerry Hill's office led the negotiations, and he said at the time that they were open to the possibility of further negotiations early next year. Aaron Ackman and, I believe, Veronica Ramirez were both on that call. Sherry Pemberton from State Lands distributed a legislative report in June that said the same thing. I sent copies to the City Council at the time. In response to my question about it, Mayor Seabird said in an email that was copied to everyone on the council, that hiring a relocation team does not foreclose the possibility of further negotiations. And yet, it looks—appears that that's what the city's trying to do. Why, then, is it that the city manager's office attached what looks like eviction notices to the homes of Dock Town residents and issued press releases saying the city is closing Dock Town early next year? Are they trying to foreclose the 15-year option? Someone in the city seems to be trying to speed up the process, so we can't contest it. Whoever's doing that should have the courage to stand up and acknowledge it publicly and tell us why. Or if this process has not been accelerated, then why the city is giving that impression? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Hayes?
Thank you for your time. I am also a Dock Town resident. I've capitalized on some of the things he said. I actually feel this has been predetermined a long time ago. I have a feeling, kind of like I was here, what, back in January, when they did the original announcement with the Hennig suit? Here we are to agree to hand a lawsuit, yet it's already signed, it's already complete. Here we are today, talking about the relocation specialists. They're already walking around the docks, they're already trying to interview people. What comes first? The agreement or the action? You know, years ago when we started this, you know, we—before we purchased our house, we checked with the city, we checked with the county. We were not told it was state lands. Okay? Nowhere on it did it come in that I was in a situation where I was validating something. We pay our taxes, we do everything we should be doing, yet we're treated by second-class citizens. I got a letter saying that they weren't going to do the August legislation. It said, "But it might look into January, a potential go into January." I don't know. Came back last week, and there's a sign saying, "As you know," quote-unquote, "as you know, we're closing Dock Town Marina." Actually, I didn't know. I didn't hear anything for months. Not a single piece of communication. I've emailed you, Melissa, and the City Council, and other people. Aaron's the only one that replies. How does that feel? Years ago, back in 2000—what is it, 2008 or 2009? I had my property taxes changed from a floating home to a—to a pleasure craft. Yeah, my four-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot, three-story cement building is a pleasure craft. I tried to meet the county over there to found out why. I couldn't get past the agent. I tried to get a supervisor. They wouldn't let me pass the agent. I tried to get to the manager, wouldn't get past the agent. I've emailed you, trying to get some meetings, trying to set up soon. Couldn't get past Aaron. Seems to be a predetermined path, and I'm just stuck on that path, and I don't know what we've done. My wife and Emily feel like we've done everything possible. We've tried to play by the rules, we're good citizens, we take our kids to, you know, go to school and volunteer, teach soccer, and do everything else, and we're repeatedly treated as second-class citizens. And I don't understand why, with the Inner Harbor Precise Plan that we went through, that says one of the guiding principles is to maintain a floating home and go to the other one. We would move, but we would like another place to move. We've been rejected by every Marina. It's not simple. I want my kids to grow up in Redwood City. You know, I fell in love with this town years ago, when I moved from Marin, joined a soccer team, and the next thing I was knowing, I was playing lights under Red Morton. I didn't have the lights where I grew up. That's why I chose Redwood City. And now I'm getting escorted out the door. At least, it feels like that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Solei?
I am Tanya Solei, a member of the San Francisco Bay Marina's For All nonprofit and a Dock Town resident. I hadn't decided to speak until a second ago. I was shocked to hear the city manager just explain that Dock Town needs to be closed because it limits public access to the public trust waters that were granted to the city. The fact is that, like at Morton's Beach, Dock Town actually increases public access. Looking at the bay does not mean having access to the bay. A walkway and riprap are not access. Docks, ramps, real access, homes, boats, that's real access. That's what we have, that's what needs to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is not a public hearing, so I don't think we need to close it, but that does conclude my speaker's cards. With that, I entertain questions, comments. Councilwoman Borgans?
Thank you. This is really difficult for everyone sitting up here. And I think—I'm very pleased that we're looking at hiring a consulting company that their expertise is looking at relocation opportunities. Short of anything happening, that's not saying next year, something could happen that could, you know, change this, maybe there would be legislation. But this started years and years and years ago, and there is documents and, you know, documentation and paperwork that we can all go back and find that says we are out of compliance, and we chose to not do anything about it. Because many people just felt it more comfortable to have Dock Town residents stay there. This is a tough one. There's nobody up here, I'm sure, that signed up to say, "Oh, I can hardly wait. You know, we're going to get rid of Dock Town." That isn't the plan. That's not the plan. The plan is we have two legal challenges right now. One is a lawsuit, and one is state. And it can be interpreted any way you want, because I've read state lands, and when I'm feeling one way, I interpret it one way. And when I take off that sympathy hat, I look at it and go, "Okay, there it is, right there." So reread the documents, it's pretty clear on what they're telling us we have to do. I do believe that Melissa Stevenson Diaz put it very candidly, very honestly, very passionate in what you just said. Staff isn't happy doing this, they don't sit at their desk saying, "This is going to be easy for us to do because we have law on our side." It's not about that. It's about moving our residents and trying to find the best possible result for the people that live there. And I'm telling you, sitting here, if there's a piece of legislation that can come out the first part of the year, you know, I—let's see that happen. But at this point right now, we're being told by two legal documents that we have to do something. And if you read the Hennig lawsuit, it makes it pretty clear that they will be watching if we do not comply with what the intent of that lawsuit was. That lawsuit didn't happen overnight. That was threatened and threatened and threatened. I was in this chamber room the day it was presented, and I remember it being slammed on the Diaz. Now you're being sued because you chose to ignore what you were responsible to do, and we didn't do it as a city. And it goes way back, way back, before a lot of people sitting on this Diaz, way back. And now it's our job. It's our job to represent the city in the best possible way we can. It's also our job to protect our residents. So please don't feel that anyone sitting up here is going, "Yay, let's get rid of Dock Town." Because seriously, a lot of us up here have said, "We love the idea of Redwood City having a floating home community." It's very unique, it's very special to our community, and the residents who lived there have been fairly responsible, keeping the creek clean, and, you know, just being inviting to the rest of the community. The homes out there, some of them are beautiful. You pay your taxes, you're absolutely right. You want to throw the blame around, there's plenty to go. We can all take a piece of that. But moving forward, the one thing I will say is, very respectfully, very compassionately, and I'm sure that's why your company was chosen. I agree, we didn't get off on the right foot right off the bat. It happens. And for that, we learn and we move forward. Thank you for acknowledging that. I think we move forward from here. And forward doesn't mean backwards, it means what we can all do as a team. But we have to play as a team. We have to come together as a team and find some good solutions that are not going to put our city in such a legal jeopardy that it affects the 88,000 residents of this community also. So we need to look at you as a neighborhood and a community and respect that, and keep having conversations. Don't walk away without the conversations, we need to have those.
Other comments? Vice Mayor Bain?
Very briefly, Mayor, that was very well said. This is a heartbreaking situation for everyone involved, and we are doing what we are legally obligated to do, which is to put a plan together by the end of the year. I was one of the people who was very optimistic we could get legislation passed that would buy us time. And when the clock ran out on that, we had to move forward with another plan. I still continue to hold out hope there is a chance we can get something passed next year, but we don't have the luxury of waiting to see if that happens before moving forward with these conversations. So I'm going to support this recommendation tonight, very—with a very heavy heart, but we do need to move forward.
Vice—uh, I'm sorry, Councilman G.
Thank you, Mayor Seabird. Ms. Diaz, or Mr. Ackman, could you take a moment? You know, one of the speakers talked about the letter that was posted as an eviction notice. Could you provide some clarification about what was shared with the Dock Town residents?
Certainly. So, the letter that we posted was intended to make clear to folks that OPC was onsite doing preliminary work. To be honest, we had actually, when we first started working with OPC, we'd asked them to be by just to become a little bit familiar with the area, and we didn't, at that time, give advance notice to people living at Dock Town, and that was uncomfortable. So we did hear at the time, "We'd like to know before you send anybody to Dock Town." So we wanted to do that. And we wanted to let them know what the next steps in the process would be. It had been a couple of months before we had those next steps. And so the letter was intended to explain who they were, to say that they were there on behalf of the city, to say that we would be seeking to set up meetings with them. And so that was the reason for the letter. The reason for posting it was because we realized over the last few months that we didn't have everyone's contact information. We didn't have emails for everyone, we didn't have a way of reaching everyone independently without going through an intermediary. So in the past, some residents had said, "That's a way to get ahold of us." But certainly, in retrospect, I understand that it felt like something different than what we were trying to convey. We were trying to be proactive and making sure that we were reaching everybody, you know, individually, but I understand that it felt like something other than that.
Yeah, Councilman Howard?
I just want to say, I agree with what my colleagues have so eloquently said, and I'm not going to repeat, I'm just going to say that I totally agree, and it has been so difficult. But I'd like to say that if legislation were to be introduced, I'm sure the city would be open to having those discussions and seeing what can be done. But as has been said before, we don't have the luxury of waiting for something like that to happen. We have to protect the interests of our city and everyone concerned, and so we need to move forward simultaneously. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Seabird. I forgot to just ask the question, and maybe it's more of an affirmation, is that, as Councilmember Howard said, even if we approve this, it does not preclude any other activities concurrently from happening, whether it be legislative relief or anything else that may provide relief to Dock Town?
That's correct. And if I may, just add one other item to address a question that arose about timing. It's not only—it's been difficult, obviously, for many reasons, but one of the reasons this situation has been difficult up to getting to this point is we haven't been able to tell people living there who do want to move, and we know there are some who do. We haven't been able to give them a process to describe what assistance we can provide. And so one of the urgencies for us, besides being legally obligated to adopt a plan, one of the urgencies really is trying to respond to the needs that we've heard expressed from some people who are ready to go and need to know, kind of, what can the city do to help. So that's another reason that we wanted to move forward at this time.
With that, I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and I'm going to try and address them in general. While this is an extremely difficult situation for everyone, I also want to say, to be honest with you, no one—I'm not being—I'm not being legally forced to move out of my home. So it's difficult for us because it's not what we wanted to be doing. We have a lot of things that we, I'm sure, got elected to do, and other things that we'd love to be doing. But I also want to acknowledge that I understand there's a lot of grief involved, and we just can't—I don't have any way to put it, that I wish we weren't having to do this. Having said that, I also want to address a few things that have been said throughout the community about this, that this is intentional, that we intentionally went after the 15-year legislation to divide the community, that somehow we're doing this with ulterior motives legislation to divide the community, that somehow we're doing this with ulterior motives. All that kind of stuff is a load of crap. These six people up here that sit with me are not doing this to harm people, to get anything for themselves, to put things in their pocket, to divide a community, to evict people, to kick people out. I guarantee it, there isn't-- I'll let you think what you do of me individually, but I am going to stand up for my colleagues and say, "This is being done in the most compassionate way we know." We've never done this before, and we didn't ask to do this. This is a decade-old, decades-old problem, and I just wish that people could understand that difficult things can happen without labeling us as malicious or dividing the community or a whole bunch of other stuff that we've been labeled as. That's not what we're doing this for. And so I hope that moving forward, if you don't know us individually, you'll get to know us, and when you do, I hope you will see that we have-- that we have heavy hearts about this and that we are doing the best we can within the legal constraints that we've been given. So with that, I would ask for a motion on this item.
I'm moved.
Second.
And I think we're still at a roll-call vote.
House Member Mazur?
Yes.
House Member Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Borgans?
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bain?
Yes.
Mayor Seabird?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are on to item 9A, which is a study session on options for addressing neighborhood And with that, I'm assuming if people need breaks, she'll get up and take one, so that's--